Okay, thank you, Miles.
It's for the May meeting?
Yeah, it'd be May 10th, I believe is that meeting. Any other citizens that would like to come before the board? With none, what I'd like to do is go on to unfinished business, committee briefings. Do we have anybody from the sewer committee today, Josh?
Good, I know there was a re- Situation now with the public park at the end of the street. City invested, committed themselves on that. The way the land lays and everything, it's zone multi-unit dwelling. And it'd make more sense for the future of the property to go, with multi-unit dwelling, to go into maybe lower-income housing development. Jim Drayton owns a big section of property, as you come up from Highway 101 at an angle there, just right at the end of the blacktop. I'm down about halfway between where he is in the park area. And I have 300 feet. And also, there's a lot of foot traffic lately, you know, like in the summer, spring, it's getting heavier. And I know the city's aware of that. People are kind of walking on my property to a degree, to as far as it's going to becoming kind of a safety and a health, you know, kind of, it needs to be, it could be cleaner in a safety situation, maybe in the future, without utilities on that street. The reason why I bought the property in the first place was that I liked the location. I'm self-employed. It's easy for me to get to Newport and north end of town and everything. And it makes a lot of sense to have multi-unit dwelling there to maximize the situation for the, even for the city. There's a lot of people that can't afford first-class housing. Vacation rentals and all this stuff costs all kinds of money and everything. So if it was a right, if it was a right situation for the city, indirectly, maybe the city would benefit from, you know, regular, regular-
And everybody that comes along, and then they're going to be the host in the fireworks parade again. So they'll be able to give us kind of an outlook on what they're going to expect for show up and line up, not just have some out-of-control boater in charge. So, other than that, we've also tentatively set up a cleanup after the fireworks, possibly the day after, the 5th, so that everybody has family here, doesn't have to sprint out early in the morning of the 4th and go do a work patrol. So, we're going to ease off on that till the 5th, and then a few of us will go out and scour the shore and see if we can find any debris that was misplaced. And then, the last thing for the special projects was the East Devils Lake Road cleanup. There again, I don't think I wrote the dates down, but it should be similar to last year. And the West Devils Lake cleanup as well. We'll have that posted after this week on the Devils Lake water improvement notifications under special projects. June 5th for East Devils Lake. And September 11th, I'm sorry, September 11th at 1 o'clock?
11 to 1.
11 to 1. So, both pickup days are going to be 11 to 1. I think the first one, I was going to provide lunch at the special projects meeting.
10 to 12. 10 to 12? Okay.
So, the first cleanup, yes, the first cleanup will end at Brown Bear State Park, where we will have lunch provided for all the participants. Thank you.
Great.
That's all I have.
Great. Just to kind of make a comment, me being part of the special projects committee, it was a joy to have everybody together at 10 o'clock this morning. I haven't attended all of the volunteer committees, but I can tell you one thing, this special projects committee is motivated group to get things done. And I think it's, it's great that everything that we got accomplished last year and what we already have scheduled for this year. So, to also piggyback on the sheriff, it was great to have two sheriffs at our meeting today. It's kind of nice to get them in a room and shaking hands with them. We're the neighbors, we're kind of the watchdogs of the lake. We also offered our assistance as homeowners, if at any time they felt like they were in trouble or incapacitated. We discussed the homeowners association and the signs in the yards of the homeowners association. The other thing I thought that was a great topic that was brought up is that on the 3rd of July, you know, what it is that they do on the 3rd of July prior to the escorting the boats through the boat parade. And we had a little conversation about people on the lake, they bring their grandkids. And it would be nice of the sheriffs if they would go around to the different product, properties, looking for kids. And if they had stick-on badges and just kind of get the kids involved a little bit in what's going on, on that great day, you know, we're celebrating our independence and all. So, anyways, good meeting this morning. Save Our Shoreline and water monitoring. Could you state your name, please?
Oh, Mary Hallisack. We've got everybody, everybody's not in there yet. Everybody was there. The plant staging day, the planting day, which is on April 21st at 10 o'clock, at Kenton Anne's upper storage. The staging day, we're hoping that the plants arrive. Not yet, we're hoping they come in tomorrow, but at least next week before the 18th. We have 120 plants. And the plan is to stage them, that's what he put in a fiber around the rocks in the bottom, pull them down, and then we'll have rebar and fencing installed in five different areas around the lake, about 20, 24 plants at either of the rounds. We could use another couple sites if anybody wants to. We have rebar and fencing.
How many did you need? How many more sites are available?
We've got, we want to leave them.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Kathy's plant, we can be one if we don't get anyone. Jack's, Rises.
Jack.
Jack, Jack's there. So, you know, wherever you can just put plants, and depending upon the space that's available, we might put 15 plants there. But not, you know, 20 to 24, just size it, if we're average jobs.
So, these are all shoreline plants, is that right? Well, I have, I have a residence. Maybe I should just give the address, I'll get the address and then let you know.
Yeah. And so, we're going to meet at Kent's on April 18th, Wednesday, and at the Emperor's Staging Day, at the Emperor's Shop at 10 o'clock, so everything's at 10 o'clock. To stage the plants, give them wrap with rocks in. And we don't, we think the rocks will just come right in. So, we're going to put rebar down through the fencing around the lake. So, we still have to get the zip ties, tie the rebar to the, there's some of those things that are working. But, if anyone wants to come, you need gloves on the apron, and then leaders, sled chopper, clients all down, and on the 1st of October, we get the staff.
So, Josh, can we announce that on the website, too? Just kind of the, a little bit more specific details, the address of Kent and Anne's. And-
At 10 o'clock, and the 1st at 10 o'clock. And then we'll disperse to the different sites, and we'll all go, depending on how many people, they will all decide what happens.
Are you going to go in water via boat, or via property? Yeah.
Help me just wave it.
Yeah. So, pending weather, too, I would think. Yeah, it's- Okay.
I have a concern with the rebar.
Yes?
And how long they are, and if they will ever be picked up, or if they will ever be-
I haven't picked them up yet, but, so I was going to talk to Ken about it when it gets there.
Okay. I just have a concern with-
About 46, 43 to 44, we need that some rebar, fencing, the rest.
Oh, okay. Not necessarily, but I see now.
I thought you mentioned 3 to 4 feet.
Yeah, 3 to 4 feet. But then we've got to go in, so that would be one, it's all.
Well, and kind of, an overview for the audience, kind of like to make the statement, too, one of the objectives of this planning is to see what works and what doesn't work. Yeah, and so, you know, you have to get plants in the water. We're going to test different areas, different bottoms, and different plants, and-
And waves, and sand, and also, we're getting them in early enough, they have a growth period, where Kent tested last one, and getting them in by September is not enough time for them to establish.
Right.
So, that was a test, that was our first test. Now, we're going to do our second test, putting them in different sites around the lake, where we can mostly, that side, you know, so, young man. But, the rises are a little further.
Right.
And, yeah, so, we'll, we'll see what happens.
How many plants are we getting?
34. So, the vitamin I, I, is 20 to 24, we got 6 sites, 7 sites, 6, that's like, but, you know, like our side, if we're one of them, we only have 10, you know, on our other side, so, that would be a lot.
Well, and it may be that if they do establish, then we can propagate and split up, and, you know, it's kind of like the domino.
And we'll know what rows, we'll know what rows, and that, that is worth, right, so, let's, we make this, some of the 40 are going to be, you know.
Great job. I'm anxious to see it.
Are you going to report on the fish stocking, I think that would be?
Oh, yeah, the first of the month, ODFW stocking about 12,000 steel men, so, numbers are up, can well, it's going to be fishing, and the fishing derby is coming up this month as well, and we can put another 7,000 down.
What's the date?
28th of the new fishing.
I mean, the first dump?
Oh, the first dump was the first of the month, I don't know.
Oh, they already did it?
Well, if you go to the ODFW fish stocking schedule list, the dumps and sizes of them.
I call 15, last, that's our fish wildlife machine, since it's, the website's kind of taking the ground, it's all, they generally try and update it, but if you really want the exact information, always give a call, that's why I just make sure, you know, it's what it was, kind of, I think.
Great, great.
And we never, we never really said anything else, that's theory.
Right. But-
We're good. Okay, so, if you have a sledgehammer, or clam shovel, or just want to come out and wrap plants, 18th, if you want to plant them in the, this is, these are test plantings that will be monitored by the homeowners. And from there, we'll go on to the state parks and the city park, you know, the parks around the lake, and try to do something there, K Street, and, you know, all the parks around. But we thought we'd start with homeowners who can look at their plants and say, yeah, that's working, or that's not.
Great.
Yeah. Let's see, today, water monitoring. Oh, our next meeting is May 10th, Thursday, at 3:30, at Oregon Coast Community College for the committee.
And we'll be doing the water monitoring starting May 1st.
Oh, yeah, the water monitoring, that was number two.
Will you give me the dates for that?
Pardon me?
I can't seem to remember the dates that you start and then you finish for the water quality monitoring.
Yes, we start like the Monday, Tuesday before Memorial Weekend, so that's like the 24th and 25th, 23rd, 24th, whatever Monday and Tuesday is the end of May, before Memorial Day. And then we go testing for the Labor Day weekend crowd, and then that's it. So, we go from Memorial to Labor.
21st and 22nd is Monday and Tuesday prior of May, prior to, yeah.
That's, that's when we'll probably do it, so that we can get it posted in time. And then, and it's usually Monday, Monday, get the samples, process them, Tuesday, read them, and report them. So, that's what we try to do, but, you know, if there's a holiday on Monday, then Tuesday, Wednesday.
Is it Tues, is it the week following the testing that it gets posted?
Well, it usually gets posted by Friday, before the weekend.
The day, the day, the day of the second day of testing.
Oh, Tuesday, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. So, we read the second day, because you have to go 20, about 18 to 24 hours of cooking, cooking the, yeah. Kathy knows, so.
Great, is that it?
I think so, yeah.
Mary Ellen, thanks for heading up the committee. We appreciate it. And it might be a good time to interject. For those in the audience, if you look over here, the new signs that we have made up for the boards at the boat launches, and, you know, Josh, you want to fill us in what those are for, and how they came about? I know Bill and Julie Sexton was involved in that.
Well, Bill and Julie had a lot to do with it, checking out the condition of the signs and seeing what needs replacing. We noticed on a, on a routine survey of our signboard, that some of them were missing, a couple of them were misspelled, they had missed the weather, they got some weather, but who knows? And additionally, some of them were completely underpainted, so we wanted to committee and try to go back and forth about, expected what we like to see on the signs, about what people are expecting to see, and what's, what is the most important information, and we started with what you see out there right now, which is very basic math, with the major areas, the lakes, the protected areas, where we sample, and also that, post our sample results as well. In addition, we have taken a lot of contact information, as they come up there, and it's just super busy, and direct this through the www.kittenswift.org, which is really kind of what we want as the access of information source, because it's so much easier to keep all that information in one spot, be able to change it as we need to, because we kind of have to change, obviously, as we go, as we go through these projects, especially we're talking about entire competition and health of the land. So, we're going to use the website, or we direct people towards that. I'm, I'm very proud of Julie, the excellent job, getting those ordered up and talked about as far as what we're looking for, and so, they'll look very, very nice and professional, and be a good, good thing for our organization, when people come and visit, and people live here.
Thank you, Julie, we appreciate it. And the quality, I looked at the quality at the special projects meeting, I don't think we'll have these deteriorating as fast as what was there. So, thank you. Let's go ahead and go on to reports of projects of, and operations. Josh, could you give us an update on the Devils Lake Conservation Narration Project, please?
Julie, this is very exciting, the committee just received our full regulatory approval for our Lake Conover.
Yay!
And we're very wanting, and then getting that put together, and all the discussions we've had, and deciding where we're at. So, myself, and when Tom comes in on Mondays, I can help you as well, for shaking the trees to find some good bidders and contractors that will be a good fit for some of the contractors we've already kind of been in contact with. Very shortly here, we'll be working with the board to get an RFP, or direct appointment generated. I believe we'll still be, we'll still be obtaining free bids either way, if we don't have to do an RFP. But, we'll choose a contractor, and next step, we'll be funding an installation. Also, let's not forget that the Sledge Tribe has also generously already given us $1,000 for this project, so, we're well on our way to funding what we have reserved in our reserve funds for the project purpose as well. So, right now, we are just crossing the t's and dotting the i's, and we hope to have it in by, in our work period, which is, who knows, September, when we do this.
I got to tell you, you know, I haven't heard those words, that we got all the permits, all agencies have signed off in a long time. And so, appreciate your due diligence in following these through. And the way I understand it, it, we don't really need the board approval on the RFP portion, and there may not be a need for an RFP, but we do have to approve the dollar amount, correct? Okay.
I think that's more of a matter of form, being a public organization, is that we're showing our due diligence as an organization, to make sure that we're evaluating the right things, so there's no question when we don't choose a contractor, that we, you know, we report it to you.
Great, great. Anything else on that?
That is pretty much it for that. And, and I will say, the organization's worked with US Army Department of Fish and Wildlife, NOAA, National Marine Fisheries Service, and former Sea Land, have all been very helpful. They've been great to us throughout the permitting process, as far as sharing information, getting back to us in America, finally back, and so we, and I, guys, really first appreciate it, as well.
Great. Bill?
Question, what's the progress, or can you give us an update on the Water Street access? Where the proposed generator's going to be located?
Oh, that, that was approved a couple months back. We did, the county, the county gave us access, granted us a, where we could, we could place that equipment there, so.
So, are we going to need a power supply?
We will have to figure that out as we get into the project, and we'll have to do that after we choose a contractor for us, because we don't know exactly what-
System.
That'll be part of the specs, and-
And then we'll have to say, I think, we're getting some kind of base, you know, maybe some, I'm sure some type of protection for it, because we don't want to find it back on the boat trailer. So, there are a couple little things we'll have to-
Was there any talk about upgrading the lot, the ramp?
They did not, the county is pretty much letting us have the run with cleaning it up, you know, cleaning up the brush, everything, there's a lot of it, it's kind of overgrown and everything, and cutting out the space where we need to put the lawless and protect it, but, for the time being, they don't have any funding or any plans to improve the boat ramp, or anything.
So, it'll still remain a public boat ramp?
It will.
Okay.
Good. Want to give us an update on the video monitoring project?
Absolutely, I just, I just listened to our acceptance for the $4,000 matching grant from the special, she took care of the mortgage, from cash money for the project. What I do better handle than what the cost of equipment, to cover that, the board being, if we can, inside, or we don't want.
Great. Want to give us an update on the grants?
That is everything else about grants, I kind of wrapped up into two, I just spoke about the bid on the water, and the water side narration. I can do for bike jackets, and the loader stations, that Julie keeps filled up, the monitoring project, the large generation project, anything like this, anyone have ideas, or get them to me, shoot me each mail. There is money out there for these things. At this point, there's only so much I can put towards different projects, so, if the doers, if we can come up with better, not all of them fit, not a grant for everything, but if there is something out there, we can definitely put towards, and some of the stuff involving money, and from, like, the regulation government, they want to go to, for $50,000, a lot of these specialty grants as well, so just keep that in mind. There's something, you think about, it's, you know, generally don't write a grant for $300 or $500 or anything like that, but if it's a few thousand dollars, and it's something that has a specific purpose, whether it's equipment-wise, and whether it's outreach-wise a program we want to do with, you know, education on the lake, for adults or children, or whatever, we can, we can find a partner, and help, help for some of those issues.
Good. Under new business, so last meeting, we had discussed the Midcoast Water Planning Partnership, and I asked that it be deferred till the next meeting. And I apologize, but I'm going to ask that it be deferred one more time until we have a full board to discuss that. I did have time to do some research on it, and so, I feel at that time I can give some valuable input, if we could do that.
Sounds great.
So, next is non-agenda, non-agenda items, and a couple things I just wanted to bring up, the budget, our next year's budget. Josh and Teresa are in the planning process of that, and I've been involved a little, but we did put on the website, the budget calendar now, so the monuments that we have to hit as per the RCWs, that it's on the website. And Miles, let's see, Andrew, thank you for stepping up to be on that committee, we appreciate it. The other thing I'd like to bring up is remind that the community days are in progress, and that the Stewart Award will be given on the 21st at the dinner. Want to make comments on that?
Absolutely, we've, we've changed the name of the award to the Bud Depwig Memorial Lake Stewart Award, so from here on out, that's what we're going to refer to it as, when we give it out every year, Bill will be presenting it to Joyce, Bill's wife, at this, this event, so we're looking forward to that. And I have several of their family members coming as well, and they've been, been very gracious and appreciative of us setting this up and doing it, and inviting their family to come with us, so, looking forward to that, for sure. Just to backtrack a little bit, too, there were a couple of changes to the budget calendar. I think we changed it from May 12th to May 10th to make it consistent with having the budget committee meeting before, right before the board meeting, I believe we did that last year as well.
Yeah, well, the, a couple issues, and I had brought it up, but we feel that we publicly need to advise.
Yeah, yeah.
The date, the last date was on a Saturday.
Correct, and we had, and that was overstated.
We have an issue with facility here, and that's where we normally hold it, and I felt that it would be best to do it prior to our regular meeting. And Josh would agree to that, and so I think publicly, I would say that's the notice that we're giving, is to look on the website for the calendar, and if you had seen it at some time that the meeting was on a Saturday, it's now on a Thursday.
Yeah, and keep an eye on those, those blog posts that come up on the front page of the website, because that's generally where I put the, the new stuff, or any, any recent changes that have happened, and generally, all those links are interactive, so you can click on them, and it'll take you to a document, so if we're, if we're hiring a position or something like that, the application will be there if you click on it. In this case, if you click on it, you can go to the, the full budget calendar, it'll, it'll link up and show you where it's at, so, and those are- And those are, I think those are like six floating buttons or four buttons that float underneath the big colored buttons on the front page of the website.
Yeah.
So they're, they're fairly visible, but.
So that's what it looks like and it was really, the May 10th is, it was May 12th, which would have been a Saturday and we've switched that to May 10th.
Yeah.
Great, anything else?
I think that's, I, we haven't set a time yet, but I was, I was shooting for four thirty since we have the board meeting at six, thinking that ninety minutes should be quite a bit more time than we need, or at least a sufficient amount of time to get through the, the initial committee meeting on that, so. I think that's about what we spent last year, was just a little over an hour, I think.
Well, and we've, we did a great job last year streamlining the narrative portion of it and we've even done better this year.
Yeah.
Still complete, but definitely streamlined it, which actually I think people are going to understand it better because it's not so complicated.
Yeah, that's been the goal. I've attended a couple workshops through both the special districts and through Oregon Department of Revenue that really helped me be able to trim that up and make it more, more readable from a layperson's terms and being so, you know, more, more accurate as well, because there's not, a lot of the redundant information's been taken out, so.
Great. So I'd like to move on to any additional comments after the meeting from citizens on non-agenda items? None? So board announcements, any announcements from the board?
I have none.
I have two, not announcements, but a question. One was for Josh and it pertaining to the Devil's Lake video monitoring equipment.
Mm-hmm.
Where are we going with that? Cameras?
You mean location wise or just general project description? Location wise, we were looking somewhere up the north part of the lake, maybe somewhere like Knoll's. Other location was potentially Vivian's down there if they would be interested in having something like that near their area, but I thought that'd be a good place to start with two of them, so we have something up north, we have something looking at the D, which is kind of one of our big concerns as far as people in and out of town and storm debris and what we battle with that every year, so.
So any of those people have stepped up, other than Knoll, that said it's okay or they're.
Well, and I haven't, I haven't completely locked down that, you know, those locations yet.
So we're just looking at two potential video cameras to look at the lake?
Correct. Weatherproof and they'll be piped out to the website, it's called FTP and that's where I run into a little bit of difficulty because we kind of have to, there's no buy it off the shelf from Best Buy kind of solution for it, because all of them want to pipe it to their specific, like if it's a Nest camera or something, well, it has to go to their website and then you can't get it from their website onto yours. And I think that's really a strength and a real important part or component of that project is being able to have that directly fed into our website, so. But I am working my way through it.
How long of a project is that? I mean, is it?
To install it and do it?
Yeah.
Not very much, because you're talking about some very small type of solar power, you know, mounted on a four by four post or something essentially for most of these things that we're looking at, or, you know, standard one-ten, so we don't have anything more than an extension cord that we need ran and at most, it would be an extension cord. Some of the little Raspberry Pi computers and things I'm looking at to, to set up with this are three watts, I think, so they can easily run off solar battery for, for months and months. So. And, and one of the, one of the, kind of the mockup I've talked with Jim Dewey about here so far is getting a, that small FTP camera in something like a Pelican case and I know that he built one down there for Nell Scott and they, they built a super fancy one that, you know, looks out three miles to the ocean and everything, we, we obviously don't need that, but that's kind of what we're thinking about modeling it after, so we're, we're weatherproof and we can pop it open and do whatever we need to do.
The thing I like about that is we have so many residents that they're not permanent here and to be able to have some kind of webcam that goes with maybe them looking at a weather report and everything and it's just a visual, you know, that's, that's my vacation spot or that's my summer home and that's what's happening here. I think it's going to be a great plus and we got a grant for it too, a par, partial grant, so I think it's good.
Yeah. Well, and, and you know, if we really, if we master this and figure out how to set up a unit or two and we can plug a couple more of them in, then we'll already have the infrastructure set and piped to our website. We can even use it for security purposes for our, our shoreline equipment thing, you know, all that, that we're, we're installing this fall, so.
Yeah, I think that'd be a real asset to that, once we have a piece of equipment like that sitting out, vulnerable to have it, have an eye on it.
Yeah, and it's great for our insurance and liability costs as well, so. And, and actually that's who the grant is from, is the special districts insurance services for, for safety and security, so.
Great. What else you got?
Uh, what else do I have? I don't know, what do I have? The dam stanchions are in, the steel uprights that hold the impoundment structure, and there's no boards in until the fifteenth, so those are, those will be ready to go and we'll start backing up the lake. We've noticed a significant amount of additional tidal sand in the existing area that it's always been, but this year it seems to be concentrated, so at our impoundment level of nine point five-three, we're going to see quite a bit bigger area of sand this summer at our impoundment level, I think, which last year we were just barely covering it and there were just a couple of small islands, but this year there's, it's substantial. And I think our high tide event, when I went down it and the lake plugged up, the sand was at ten point five or ten point six on the survey pole, so yeah, that's a lot of And, okay, so the dam stanchions are in, ready to go and the other, the last thing is the Bud, Bud Depwig Memorial Presentation and I don't know how many people in here knew him, but if there are any stories or anything anybody wants to share, get ahold of me before the event so I can add it to my comment.
Great.
And I talked to Kathy earlier about that and I still need to get with you, just anything you might have picked up over the years being a neighbor with him and I know Mitch and Dana were affiliated with him or associated with him, so I'm looking for some, some good old stories. I got one about moving his A-frame, but save that. Thank you.
That was one of his favorite stories.
Yeah.
Good, any other comments or announcements? With none, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, none.
Thanks. Did we forget anything?
What are you going to do to him?
Am I in trouble? Did I mispronounce something?
No, I don't think so, you did a good job.
That wouldn't be uncommon.
You did a great job.
Yeah, Larry.
Did you look at the time?
Uh, yeah, well, we started a little bit afterwards, so.
I'm so soon there.
Uh, we were close.
We'd be good.
I think, what's my wife say, she knew.
She said, didn't she say?
Forty-five, didn't she?
It was forty-five when you consider we, we started six oh-two.
Yeah. I know how to listen to my wife.